Okay, let's call meeting to order. We have a quorum, we need six of us. I don't see any public, so I don't think we have public comment.
Except for Drew.
Except for Drew?
Yeah. You can tell you a little bit.
You bet. Go for it.
So, I'll keep it short. For the last two years, we've been involved in.
Would you introduce yourself?
Drew Brookhart, Director of Gunnison County Libraries. Guest. So, for the past couple of years, we've been involved in lawsuit seeking direction from the courts on whether or not requests for reconsideration of materials or request to remove books from the library are public documents. So, of course, there's an initial opportunity to have a confidential discussion with the librarian or any library staff member. And then, if that discussion is, you know, not in agreement with what the person wants, then there's a form for them to fill out, which, you know, brings action and consideration to the library board in the case of our library and a lot of libraries. And so, there's a question of whether or not that form and the identity of the person making the request are public information. And so, we are now at the Colorado Court of Appeals and our library board believes that the form is public. And that by filling out that form and asking the library board to act, you're making a public, a request of a public community. And that that's a public action. So, I'm here so that I can sit and listen to him talk tomorrow.
What time is that?
Two o'clock.
Sneak away.
So, it'll be on.
Is it on Zoom?
It'll be on the.
Okay, streaming.
But it's fascinating, right? So, somebody turns around and tries to turn around and use the library's privacy policy in order to protect their identity for challenges. It'd already been written in the newspaper, right?
We wanted to use the law, the statute that protects what you read as a use of the library. And, which is a great law. And I think we all agree that that's a wonderful statute. And that privacy is really important. But the question is, when they take it to the board, does it become a public action?
So, what happened to the lower court?
The lower court said that the document was public, but that the personally identifiable information should be redacted. And we're, so I took it to the district court seeking a declaration, which roped in our Cresta beat news, who had made a Colorado Open Records Act request. So, at that point, we were joined. And we both, the library board and the newspaper editor, agreed that it was in the best interest of everybody for this to be a public document. You know, there's, I think there's a central question of why, and there's a lot of reasons why. But, you know, you can list them off, sort of, it's like, there's a, you know, people with position power or people that are seeking position power or people with influence over certain aspects of the library. And it's in the best interest of the public to know who's, who is trying to influence the library board to remove access to certain materials.
Interesting.
Meekus from Colorado Freedom of Information Coalition. In one of the DC too.
The Recorder's Committee for the Freedom of Press.
That's medical.
So cool.
Does it still ride in part, whether or not challenging of book's presence in the library is an ever use?
That's the question.
That's the thing, right? So, like, there was an article today, New York Times, they were supposed to have 159 requests for reconsideration that came to the library. But most of them, they had not read the book. I think maybe all of them, she said they hadn't read the book, they wrote a letter or they got the list from somewhere else. So, does that constitute a use? So.
To me, it's you're trying to deny somebody else's use.
Yeah.
So, if it's not a use of the library, then it would not be protected. So, then it would be public.
But what happened, then it went to Quora. And under Quora, the judge analyzed the whole thing under the constitutional privacy right. Totally outside of Quora, totally outside of the, of the special. Any point in that, right? Either. So, there's a lot of issues that we want to, that we care about, the library stuff, but.
Is Amikus fancy Latin for endorsement?
Friend of the court.
Okay.
So, thank you for letting me warm my hands by your fire dinner on the day before we go to Quora. The camaraderie, so.
Good luck with it. Look forward to hearing about your win.
Yes, I hope to prove that.
Yeah. Good for you for standing up for it. Okay, David, do you two want to introduce yourself?
Maybe you all would. So, Bob McCool is the Principal of Ariel Consulting. He is the consultant that we hired to advise you on the IT negotiations around, the ICA negotiations around IT issues. So, we're super happy to have Bob here. He's submitted questions today that I turned already into IT and talked about our expectations around all these things. I suppose that's probably what they're already plotting. I appreciate the specificity. There's, shouldn't have excuses. I said we'll have to answer some questions either at the office table or something.
Job instrumental in pulling all that together.
So, Bob, can you introduce yourself, tell us a little about your company?
Sure. So, my name's Bob McCool. Company is Ariel IT Services. We started back in 90s. Actually moved here and went to work for the city of Boulder in 1994 for the Public Works Department and then went over to the Open Space Department for a while and in 99. And I also, I knew Ray Ingram, for those of you who know him, he was the director, C director? Or was he with the IT?
He was the IT manager.
IT manager here. And he and I did a number of projects together, including, my favorite one is that we put one of the first maps on to the internet using library servers and open space maps. And it was just cool. You could go in, drill into Trailhead, so you could think of that. But anyway, so that happened. He and I worked on a number of things together and he actually started the company with me, but he opted to stay with the city and I went out on my own. So, my background, I have been in enterprise IT since mid 80s. Yes, I started with Johns Manville, then Ernst &amp; Winnie, Ernst &amp; Young, Mark &amp; Young. And came out here to the city of Boulder and then started my company in hopes of bringing those tools and that idea of enterprise IT to businesses that were kind of small to mid-range. And so, we've been successful in doing that. We're a small company, there's five of us. We're in Louisville now, we were in Boulder a few years ago. And we provide managed services to companies up to about 150, 200 employees. And lately, I've been doing these consulting projects and absolutely loving it. It's getting me back into some larger enterprise opportunities and it's something I really enjoy doing. So, I'm really looking forward to working with all of you. We're primarily a Microsoft shop, just so you know, that's our, we do a lot of Microsoft work. We, when I moved here, we did a huge migration. Remember it was group wise? It was a group wise.
Group wise?
Big group wise email migration, yeah. And we've done probably 100, 150 migrations over the last 15 years or so from various platforms into the Microsoft platforms. So, very comfortable in that world. I've toured the libraries with Amy and we have a good sense of, just good overview, I should say, at this point, of the technology that's in place.
Great, thank you.
So, in two weeks, the city IT department will present to you their plans for whatever it is that's going to be in the ICA negotiations, including decoupling. And Bob will be here, attend this with you at that meeting. Well, actually, we won't be here, we'll be at Meadows on August 8th. So, I think probably at the beginning, when you establish the roles, you allow for Bob and whoever else might be here to ask questions directly of IT. Obviously, you guys can ask questions directly of IT. But if you want, probably establish that consultants and friends and family and everybody else can ask them questions as well, if that's something.
I'll be a little less casual, I'm going to watch a baseball game after.
Jen, you want to start introducing yourself?
Sure, my name is Jen Yee. I am a trustee appointed to a five-year term this year.
Carol Ryan, and trustee with a three-year term.
Benita Duran, trustee with a five-year term.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Werba, four years her.
Johnny Teeter, I'm the short timer, I got the one year term.
Yep, and I'm Sam, I got the two-year term. Working in a MacBar.
That's the question about the fancy Latin.
I wouldn't even know where to start, I know.
Well, I am here to just help. I, one of my favorite things is helping people understand technology, so as whatever the question, I'm generally delighted to talk technology. And in terms, or as technical as it might go, so that's one of my strong suits. I can leave you with some cards, if any questions come up.
Well, I do have a question about migrations out of government IT systems. Do those tend to be sort of more complex than maybe an internal migration from one system to another or something like that?
So, the environment that the city's in is a GCC environment, which is pretty straightforward, GCC high, which, those are much more complicated to deal with. But the GCC environment, we've done ins and outs with GCC, which are generally pretty straightforward. I'm not interested in issues.
The agreement is for the transition outlet and then.
Yes. So, migration will put it on RSP and/or if we are required to build that. So, that's one of the questions that we don't know until August 8th, this cycle, the city proposal is. With regard to all the hardware and with regard to that. So, network is a big one. And right now, it's a little, you know, as you can imagine, it's a little spaghetti wire and there's a lot of stuff going here. Hither and yon, and we aren't sure exactly which are hither or hither or yon. So, it will not necessarily be a simple solution, but I'm sure it's possible.
Well, it's structured well, it's well done.
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm happy that you're gonna be with us on the 8th, because I feel like after we've, that might be a little alarming to not have any contacts for whatever the plan is. So, appreciate that.
Yeah, the hope is that I can ask questions for you that I think you have interest to.
Great, great. And then a process question then, so after that, have you guys talked about how to get back together to give us your advice once you've the city IT piece?
We have, so we will come back with a recommendation. I think two weeks is what we talked about. If you can go sooner than that, we will, about the reaction to like, basically, it's simpler than that or it's way more complex. If you go to this, it's going to cost you this five to you. So, I don't, we don't know, frankly, at the same time, provide options. Where they're going to provide their one recommended solution to this decoupling, we don't know. And so, we'll see all that in the, obviously. My sense is that they're leaning towards making one recommendation. I don't feel that for a moment. I don't know.
Like, can we negotiate?
Very nice to meet you.
Yeah, you too, thanks for coming in.
Feel free to mail questions off.
Just to clarify, are we meeting next weekend Meadows or the 8th?
Both.
Okay.
Next weekend, the 8th at Meadows.
Great.
Okay, David, did you want to introduce Amy and Benita?
It's been a great pleasure introducing Amy. Sims Equity Officer. She's been doing hard work.
You've not achieved?
Yeah.
Said? I said I've not achieved.
You're a thief.
Equity Officer.
Equity Officer for the city for the past four years, five years, I think, and she's done great work. So, it's, she's thankless work, but the city is making, I think, slow but really steady strides. So, the equity plan, I asked Amy to come tonight, hoping that you will consider a motion to adopt the city's equity plan, even with questions and things that you may want to change sometime in the future. The importance that it has served the library as a city department, obviously, it's a lot of different shapes, but it's important to the workforce. And a lot of things we do is our programming and our public face. So, you know, if somebody has a question about the signs we hang or displays we do, we have and ask up until today, we point to the city's racial equity laws as a backdrop to make a lesson. Right, green story. We have displays that are on, to, sorry, on the news.
Amy, I'll let you take it away. Awesome, thank you for that introduction. So, David said my name is Amy Kay, my pronouns are she or hers. Need, I think, we were, were you at the ICMA Equity Summit? Yeah, yeah, so it was like, I saw your name on the list and I was like, she's from Boulder. So, nice to see a friendly face.
Yes.
So, yeah, the city started its racial equity work with partnership of the government alliance on racial equity back in 2018. That's when we started looking at the work and how we would embed it within the city organization. We really wanted to focus internally first, before we started expanding out into the community and worked for several years, a couple of years. Putting together the city's first racial equity plan, which was, it was a few things led up to the creation of racial equity plan. But as a partnership with the government alliance on race and equity, we may also hear of is GARE. This was an opportunity to really take kind of their roadmap on how to amplify and advance racial equity in a government setting. So, here is an organization of over 400 different jurisdictions who are looking to advance racial equity through program, policy, budget analysis, make sure that we collect data, disaggregate the data by race and ethnicity and really ask the question when we're making a decision, who's going to be benefit most? Who's going to benefit the most and who's going to be most negative by that decision? And then a part of that component is really getting together with those who will be most negatively impacted by a decision and asking them, is this solution the right solution? If not, what would the right solution be? So, an example of this, we had a rapid response racial equity assessment that we deployed during, right in the heat of the pandemic. Now, we have a broader racial equity instrument, which library staff has been learning how to employ for their decision-making processes. But an example of where that was really successful was when the library team wanted to open up the these exits as learning pods for students. And so, we were like, let's deploy the rapid response racial equity assessment. And when they did that and they really communicated with those families, mostly from the Latinx community, who are most negatively impacted from a human space, like, that's not what we need. Like, a three-hour in time block is really not what we need. We need devices, we need hotspots, those sort of things. And so, the library has been able to work with their partners to get those deployed out. So, I think it was over 300 families who were received that. And it was just a good stop measure. It's like, stop and think before we make a decision without really asking those who are most, going to be most impacted and really saying, what is the solution? I was thinking. So, the way the racial equity plan came about, best practice for organizations to develop a racial equity plan. But we also had our city council, prior to the creation of the plan, adopt Council Resolution 1275. That really committed the city organization to doing this body of work, making sure that they were going through the trainings, outlining what some of those trainings were going to be over the next few years, directing staff to create a racial equity plan. It's always good to have in writing, right? Especially at a leadership level, making sure that body exists. So, best practice, we went through the plan, we really did had our racial equity core team members, those were a process of really looking at their racialized history of the city of Boulder. Our community came to be as it is. And that's, that was very, through the policies, through the decisions that were made, through people coming and taking over, white folks coming over and taking over. So, if you have a seat in our racial equity plan, it really goes through some of that racialized history, not all of it, because there's folks up there on that. And so, we just picked some of the major pain points that really happened at the government level. And then we created five different goals. And you'll see those goals reflected in the racial equity plan. And the first goal, David was talking a little bit, impacts the workforce, but it also impacts our boards and commissions, our working groups. And that's really normalizing the conversation about race, about racism and understanding how institutional and structural racism really impact our workings and how that impacts the community. And so, there's several strategies outlined there just about what that looks like and having departments put together their own, we now call Jedi teams, which the library has in their organization. Actually, one of the first departments in the city at this, I don't know what to call it, but you were in department at the time. One of the first departments of the city that really created their own Jedi team to advance this work. Because what we know is it can't be one person, right? It takes all of us to really advance this work. And if our colleagues at every level of the organization are embarking on this work, that's a huge opportunity to elevate that work. Goal two, it was just we do it. And so, that's really looking at our city services and making sure that we're not continuing our oppressive practices and making sure that as we're utilizing the tools, we're creating the tools and operationalizing racial equity through our racial equity, rapid response racial equity assessment or racial equity instrument or keeping up with other practices. We've recently created a racial equity index, it's a mapping tool that we're going to be rolling out to the public here in the next couple of weeks, that you can really see. My sense is tracking, it's not the best data, but it is what we have. So, we can be looking at spatially in the community where we're having impacts. We're looking at things like tree canopy and for you all, it'd be like where you're providing your services. So, that's, and also just, you know, making sure as we're doing our budgeting, we're really thinking about how we're utilizing our resources and embedding that into our process. Goal three is our community commitment. So, that's the partnerships that we make with other organizations who are trying to advance this work. So, our partnership with Golden County, with Golden Relational District, Coming Library District, right? Those are all areas that we really want to make sure that we're leaning into those who are doing the great work. Because again, it's not one institution, it's all of the institutions that are really contributing or committing these systems of oppression. And so, it takes all of us to be working together to realize that. Goal four, power to all the people and that's rebuilding and maintaining that trust and extending our influence to community members of probably through inclusive and responsive engagements. And so, you've seen the city has changed the way we do a lot of our engagement practices on areas of community connectors and residence programs. So, we have a group of community members who have been working with the city for several, a couple of years now. It really started more in 2020 at the heat of the pandemic and has continued on to this, this system of understanding from community members what it is they need from the city. And when we're having, or doing our racial equity instrument or coming up with a process or a program, we're going back to those community members and saying, hey, are we on the right track, are we not? What are you hearing? How can we better support your communities? And those community members meet on a weekly basis with city staff and then go out and they're the conduits to community members who don't have a lot of faith and trust in government, particularly because they have been harmed. We have representation from the Latinx community, from our Black and African-American community, people with disabilities, people that are manufactured housing community, older adults, small business owners of color. So, those are some, are the colored communities. So, those are just some of the folks who are on that, we do pay them a stipend and they commit to coming and meeting with us, with city staff once a week for about an hour and then they go out into the communities for about three hours and that's that back and forth conduit. So, that's been a really great community engagement mechanism. And then goal five is representation matters. And that's what David was referring to, as we're looking at our workforce, our recruitment, our retention policies, things that we can do to really help support, not only we're transitioning this, we're transitioning my office to an office of equity, to an office of equity belonging. Because we understand it's not about getting people in the door, it's about really creating a space where people can be their authentic selves and have that almost like a family, right? Where they feel like they can be who they are and do the great work that they're destined to do. And that relates to our boards and commissions. So, we're getting ready to embark as an organization, looking at all of our boards and commissions practices as a whole and really trying to modify what that looks like. So, those are just some high-level things that we are working on as a city organization. And then we have, in Chinese, Chinese, my Chinese, because it just doesn't put that well. Our full logic model that has short-term, midterm and long-term goals with action and outcomes. I think you were sent the electronic version. I know, I can't read this. We don't, we're not really in the practice of printing this very often. I did print just a couple of copies and they thought, um, it's like, I'd like to take a look. But that, this logic model is truly an area where I think helps guide the work. It's not just the words, it's like, okay, we're doing this and it puts in the measures and what we're going to do next steps. And gives those timelines with like the overarching outcome of what we're really trying to achieve through this work.
I have a question. So, are employees of the district who from being employees of the city under this framework to possibly like community partnerships or something different?
So, that's what hasn't been totally formalized. I think that's part of the nuts and bolts of what needs to be determined later. I would envision, yes, it would be more of a community, like a partnership. So, I would envision, if you all chose to adopt the city's racial equity plan, you're probably going to want it modified to really align with very specific library practices, right? But in my team's vision, right, is that the library district would be a partner. And what that looks like really depends on how we shape that moving court, right? Like, is it an M O U? I don't know, right now, it's kind of a handshake thing. What do you all need to make sure that your city staff have what they need to keep continuing the great work that they're doing? And the commitment from the library districts that this is the work that you want to do. I will add, GARE, the GARE network does have a specific, there are specific groups within the GARE network. Some are focused on criminal justice. There is a library group. And so, the library group, I feel really great area. I know that some of your staff plug into that here and there. And I'm on the student committee for the, for GARE. And my understanding is the library districts have pulled back just a little bit, just because of everybody, you know, you're in it and you're busy and then you're like, okay, now I'm busy implementing the work. But it's still a great space of practice. And the membership is pretty minimal, the cost of membership is pretty minimal. Like the city organization, I think ours is $5,000 annual membership, if I'm recalling correctly. And that is for every member of the city organization. So, if the library district wants to become GARE members, I'm sure it's a smaller rate, but it would be both of you as well as city staff who'd be able to benefit from trainings that GARE offers, conversations, the GARE portal where they can just ask a question about, hey, art? Right now, the big hot topic is like, how's everybody feeling about the latest SCOTUS decision, right? What comes that impact of? Right, and so, those are some of the conversations that you have.
I'm sort of a little follow on question, which is, do you have an existing partnership within outside organization that we could model some of how we infuse these practices into our work or, you know, policies and so on?
We don't have a formal organization that has said, hey, we want to take this work and embed it. This would be the first.
Okay.
We do have an informal gathering with our Boulder Valley School District and C U. C U usually schedules those and we're like, what are you doing for the next quarter? What are some things you're working on? Right now, the city is just starting an employee resource group program in our organization. And that's something that, you know, Boulder County has been expressed interest in doing as well as C U. So that we get together and like, how are you doing it? What's the practice? Like, what's, what have you learned? And so we're sort of that thinking for unit teams is coming up. Where are your plans for unit teams, right? Do you want to participate? Come on down the hill. We'd love to have you participate in our Black Lives Matter, things like that. So this, if you all decided, it depends, like, that's a larger conversation. We're flexible people. And we do believe that my office of two, I'll be three in a month. We believe that we're working on it. Many hands make light work. And this is absolutely something that we all need to be doing. So we'd love to see how you all take it from there.
Can I just follow from that, Jen? I mean, we've been talking about this, I think, at the policy level and the board level. One of the things I came away from our meeting with staff on was a very strong desire by staff to continue the collaborations they have going on with city staff at a staff to staff level. Have you given any thought to that?
I think it really depends on what exactly those collaborations look like. So right now, one of our largest partnerships is through the Jedi team cohort. So we have departments having their own Jedi teams across the system. And so we bring them back on a quarterly basis, the leads to say, what are you working on? Here's how you do a departmental assessment, things like that. So we think that's a larger conversation of what those cost allocations are when it comes to something at that level where it's like, come talk, like, let's have a conversation, right? That's one thing. If it's, hey, Amy, can you and Anasilia put together this whole program? Like, that's a, that's a bearing off from the work that we're supposed to do.
What we discussed was that if there were any right, like, if there was space available and you were paying for this seat, can we continue with some level of training?
Yeah.
This, for some of the rest of the, it's like, we are working with climate initiatives, for instance, a lot of it. The pollinator corner, a lot of things like that. So those were, my assumption is that occurs without cost, the training stuff is something substantial.
Yeah. So it sounds like that's something at an appropriate time, we should be asking staff if they can articulate. If they really want to. I know that they ask, if we could do something in the I G A, and I think we have some line at a high level that says, the city and the district commit to continue collectively, yada, yada. I think it needs to be actualized.
Three year olds, if we strike, so staff have approached me about what kind of trainings work, kind of racial equity trainings work. I was like, I don't know. Yeah, we talked about GEAR membership and then you can offer that module and there are probably other things that you guys may want. And then you just have to tell us what that would be. But that's something that the staff are just going to have.
So on the board front, so the city has three flagship teams that we've modeled after the GEAR, our GEAR partners. When we could advance racial equity role of government, that is a mandatory training for all city staff as of 2020. We have an eight hour bias on microaggression workshop. That is four hours, really bias on microaggression. And folks come back a couple of weeks later and they really learn about white supremacy culture and like actions and things they can do to shut it out. That's what we say to call people in. And in the answer to that way. And then we have our racial equity instrument training, which is based off GEAR's racial equity toolkit. We probably racial equity instrument and it's stuck. And we probably tools, people were like, is it a software? Is it a thing? And we're like, it's kind of a framework, but we already have so many frameworks. So I said, it's an instrument in that stuff. So those are the three flagship trainings. And boards and commissions, you're having them participate in advancing racial equity role of government. We've been really trying hard to, it's technically something that's supposed to be mandatory, but we haven't really been able to. But we also heard to get volunteers to mandatory. So until it's part of an onboarding process, right? It's a different situation. So that's part of that boards and commissions work I was talking about bigger scales. But if you did the GEAR membership, they now do have an online advancing racial equity role of government training. I'm not sure if they charge additionally for that. I did sense that they were, I was thinking that that is something that's part of the GEAR membership, but we haven't looked into it because we don't. We, we have a training trainer model of equity ambassadors who facilitate all our racial equity chains. And then they're also responsible for being the people in their departments, not in addition to the Jedi teams who are really helping to do most of the work at that department level.
Does the A L A have anything?
Yeah, they have a late social justice platform. There are a lot of consultants that have been in the past, and we're seeing that resource support. And I, I got that on the E D I team, like, overall, the things you wanted, you couldn't afford to, at least put the I L S on. I have something to consider.
And there may be, you know, opportunities if it's not like very specific, if you're like, hey, we really want to bring this training in for our staff. Or like, hey, that sounds like a great training for our staff. Like, let's pull our funds together and see what that looks like. We're bringing in a woman's that's doing a talking to children about a lunchtime for our city staff right before school hits. So parents can like, think about that before they're, you know, their kiddos are going to the classroom. This is an attitude that of course the staff, it's part of, it'll be part of the wellbeing program.
I think it would be useful to see the A L A social justice platform at some point, maybe when we get into policies or something like that, just so we can see how the library world is shaped. Other questions, comments?
So it's a three year plan, right? You're like, two and a half years.
Technically, it's a three year plan, uh, three to five. We're actually, the city's getting ready to embark on a whole strategic planning process. And we want to embed this into the strategic plan, so it's no longer an independent plan.
Do you, I mean, I heard you talk about some evolution already, like equity is new, I mean, for example. I mean, is it just fluid in that way? Like, you know, what happens after three years?
But we're done.
Data and.
No, and when you zoom in, like with your, your computer and you look at the logic model, I mean, it's going out to twenty.
Yeah, it didn't. Yeah, that's hard, sorry.
It's totally hard to, yeah. Yeah, but when, when you, it's a lot, so when it, totally get it. There's goals out there that are like twenty twenty. So like, we recognize, but we also want that flexibility that the temperature changes and we learn new things and there's new language. And so having that opportunity to evaluate and pivot and say, you know what? This isn't necessarily working. How can we change it? How can we do better? What's the thing? So for our office, we are transitioning to an office of equity belonging because we recognize, so that's a huge gap. And the third person that we're bringing on is a business equity program and project manager. And so they're going to be really looking at our procurement processes, how we support small businesses in the space of getting your licensure at the city of Boulder. What are the challenges of doing business with the city? So that person will be part of our team.
I think that's a big, this board thinks that it's right. Right, so workforce, I think we're pretty good about it right now, like a very high completion rate for, for, for staff training. We need to do probably a better job, as we talked about already, about making hiring and keeping people. But where you are concerned, like, it is policy and how we spend money, right? Right, so it is the policies we need to make and how we choose to spend our money to be incredibly impactful. Like, for now, for instance, now, right? Like, we're selecting, so it's like, I feel like I'm interviewing until every day. And it's basically the criteria that we're using is, are you available? And are you capable? And it has nothing to do with a lot of things that we fully rec, I fully recognize we shouldn't do. Not. So we will be to our policy, which talk about how we contribute and how we spend our, that's pretty steps of how we speak.
And you can reach racial equity instrument, really help you by reviewing those policies, creating those policies to give you that opportunity to pause and collect that data. And ask who's who are most impacted.
Yeah, but you know, I was just going to say, related to what Dave was just saying, though, I was sort of disappointed to see that issues of procurement and diversifying contractors is like in the long-term outcomes category. It's twenty thirty, you know? Yeah, but you know, I mean, a lot of it, you know, you just want to see it, you know, to sort of make up for some lost time here.
Absolutely. And I would say, while it's, while it's all around, while some of those folks are out there the way our ops operates, if we see something and an opportunity to, to drive that more quickly, we want to do it more quickly. So an underserved business policy was drafted in our finance department unbeknownst to some of us. And we were like, wow, okay, cool, they're making progress. Like, they're actually embracing this. And this is when sometimes in a large system, when the work really takes on a life of it, of its own, and it doesn't have to be myself and my colleague and Anasilia out there driving it, really cool. And I'm really, there's some gaps, right? And so they had a couple unsuccessful recruitments. And so we brought the, the program, I said, you know, this would be a good program to bring into the office of equity belonging. And so that's where we've shifted. And so we can start that work a little bit sooner. I would really not realize this, we're going to have the person really it's a project, right? To really understand where we are, where the gaps are, how to build the program first. So it'll probably be a couple of years before it's fully launched. That's when, that's twenty twenty five.
Well, it was my impression, a specific example, that that did play a role in the selection of the vendor on the Bridge Cafe. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, we, we are currently using inside the city, the district has adopted policies with procurement. But yeah, within the city, that's certainly a factor.
Yeah.
Yeah. We would be selective.
I mean, I just, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Like, like, like large contracting projects.
Right.
Like, we're not hiring somebody for a capital improvement plan, right? It's like, that's a bigger, bigger effort. It's not make it less important.
David, do you go back to your comment about the board's role is policy and dollars, but it's also strategic planning? And I think you have tabled an item for later in the year on how the board wants to do strategic planning. And it strikes me that this would be an important part of that discussion because that goes into everything. So I don't, I don't know what that looks like.
I would like to, whatever I want to, too. So I'm sorry, it was an accident. It's located in an area between two large, between next to the largest manufacturing, highest concentration in Spanish speaking households in the city. Also, that's a part which, that's also quite appropriately located currently. Gunbar, there's, we won't find a leg to stand on in terms of the justification around the racial equity test, why we're opening a Gunbar branch. We'll, we'll have to think through all that as well. Because like, obviously, if that were our primary purpose, we may be locating much nearer in the Boulder, in a different community. But not to say that's, that's not, that wasn't part of the promises, right? In the ballot, so the ballot says we're opening a Gunbar branch, but they'll assume that we're not. Where the need is, probably in Novo Meadows and Belmont East. That area is higher level of need in terms of service to underserved. You can see that from the map. You, you downplayed that map. That map is a revelation.
Good evening. The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Buenas noches. La biblioteca se cerrará en quince minutos. Por favor concluya sus actividades en la biblioteca y salga del edificio. Gracias.
So now the city is employing it in conjunction with the racial equity.
Was those basically screenshots from that map? What was?
That was from the Virginia map.
Yeah, yeah, those were interesting.
But with the city one, there's different overlays, right? And it's on the business. G I S.
David, what are you asking us to do? Because adoption of this plan is totally, probably doesn't make sense for us because of the way it's written. So are we making a commitment to develop our own strategies under the five goals? Are we committing to do like racial equity as part of our strategic planning process? I just, if I read this and I was like, this is amazing, holy shit, that's a lot of work. Can we, like, we, we have seven people right now. So all volunteers. So I want to just make sure I understand what we're adopting.
I'm okay. I think, I think, yes, I would like to adopt that. That would be fair. Some, I think, in some ways you could adopt the, I don't know what you could do, right? Can you adopt, like, tie it, it's overall, meaning, I don't know, yeah, maybe five, so that it's intended, I would be happy with it.
So can you speak a little bit to the cover this gives you? Because I think that's the primary reason that you wanted this is that so many of the library's policies and actions refer back to this as a foundation. So that would be my only concern about only adopting a piece is if you need kind of the same.
Well, I think the two, go one, speak to the advanced. If I don't know, we need it, like, you know, used to fast or occasionally, like, it's on programs. So it's like everybody gets it and representation matters. We use.
I think goal two. I know I'm on a five.
I feel like, I feel like that's the minimum.
Yeah. And is there anything to go beyond that? I mean, should we take some action on the E D I's recruitment, hiring, retention thing as well? Would that? I know it's never goodbye, but I mean, we were presented on that by the staff. So does that help? What do you need to provide?
I haven't thought of that. Just a question. I think we would probably, us to be happy, HR professional.
Sure.
We would bring that thing back to you in a written policy form. Right now, it's a twenty seven page document, it has like a checklist on it as well.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff, stuff to do and stuff not to do, that would be the policy. Like, I think we could use that as the basis for a policy launch.
And I picked up that nicely into your goal five, into goal five, right?
I think we could also do something on an interim basis. We feel, you know, this is interim, would to be updated here. Yeah, it's like a lot of city plans, I think it's, it's hard to know.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
So much in it.
There's a lot.
What the bones are, you know, because you really kind of want the goals and the metrics and, you know, the timeline, and that's hard to parse out of here.
Could we adopt the five goals and agree to use this plan as our framework going forward with our own plan next year?
Makes sense to me.
As opposed to saying, like, we're adopting every word of the whole thing? And I worry, yeah, that like, whoops, we agreed to do something that we have no way of doing.
Like, when you all start to do your strategic plans, could be a good basis for that, right? So maybe you don't have a separate, like, it's part of your.
Yeah. Do you want to take a crack at crafting a motion around that?
Inside to volunteer that? So I'm moving that we adopt the five goals, City of Boulders racial equity plan, and agree to use the plan as a framework for setting our own plan, hopefully in 2024.
Great.
Awesome.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Great.
I'm bringing more plans to you.
Do you feel like our, our current ambassadors are experienced enough, maybe to walk the board through using the instrument on their policy development?
I don't know that we do have any ambassadors in the library who.
Amy and Alice, I hope.
Are they on the, are they? They have a training. If they're in the instrument space, which I think Amy might be, she might be both, apparently. Anna Sylvia's overall are trying to do that. But if your ambassadors have been, if they're the instrument trainers, then yeah, I do think so.
And would, and would your team be open to, I mean, to facilitate maybe an exercise? Or we could get the board to custom and point to the instrument?
Yeah, I think the best, let's see, let's see, um, who's the other person you mentioned? Alice, I love this. Check and see, let's check and see which, which classes they facilitate, because if they're instrument facilitators, yeah, and I would say, do it before the whole decoupling happens, right? And yeah, she just. Yeah, they would be absolutely well equipped to do that.
Okay.
In terms of strategic planning, I'm wondering if it would be interesting to do, apply that to a piece of the 2018 master plan, just as a way of kind of running that through and preparing for the strategic planning thinking going forward. You know, you could pick which one.
Yeah.
It's actually, you do it and want to go the whole thing.
I think the best time to do, utilize the instrument is at the beginning of a program or a policy formation, right? So as you're doing your strategic plan, that would be the time to do it as you're, and it, it's an iterative cycle, right? You start here. So there'll be many pieces to it, especially when you're doing a large plan.
Yeah.
Like, we've been doing that with the already mentioning policing project. Okay, we gotta go back. We're back to the evaluation stage. Now we're back to the community engagement stage.
I wonder, are you using it to evaluate some of the goals that maybe we don't achieve to our satisfaction might be good.
Big.
There's a reason why we didn't achieve them.
Right. I mean, I'm guessing the board is going to be picking up when to start work on the next master plan, probably in the 2025 timeframe. You know, that's how long it took to do the last one. So have some preparation and thinking about how we do strategic planning with what we're getting our heads around now and then set up.
So one of the things we are working on too is to, unfortunately, it's built in the Boulder revised code all over the place, language around master plans. So as you're thinking of developing your future plans, since you have the capacity to rename and modify it.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Current plan, the library already moved away from the city's model, making it much more of a business plan than what the city does as a master plan. So what you guys decide to name it, I think will be interesting. I personally am so thrilled to be moving away from the city's model of master planning because it's not.
Planning, like, planning, use planning model.
Yeah.
Which also.
Yeah, has its own. Anyway, that's, that's a conversation over beer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, you'll start touching on it prior to that, because we have certain decisions to make around the facility.
Yeah.
Gunbar, at least expiring, that lease will be for me, it will be in our smallest location six months, and it has the highest concentration of diverse populations in the city. Do we not need the smallest location anymore after a few months?
There's a lot of vacant space in the meadows.
And looking at your staffing plan, you know, I don't know what it's gonna be, but hiring somebody to, like, this work might be really.
Yeah, I think that will be an interesting one to see where the staff comes from, because there were so many staff so invested in this.
Right.
Sounded like they were really interested in having some way they could share, team lead. And that's great, you know, you want them to, but so that will be an interesting conversation.
Also heard it likes somebody to be kind of.
Yeah, yeah. A pivot, a pivot person.
Because they have jobs with other.
Yeah.
Exactly. All right.
Great work, thank you.
Thank you so much. Helpful.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good luck, all of you.
Thank you. All right, and now we're at the high point of the evening. We get to approve minutes. So far, five hundred minutes. So how do you guys want to do this? Does anybody have amendments to the minutes that we need to go through?
Number one. Well, great. Yeah, I, I, I found. Okay, yeah, I found, I found that a few were in there, so.
So did you add the corrections that you had?
Um, where they could, as, as he just explained, they did.
What do you mean, like, where they could?
Her amendment was the.
Again, who's second?
Oh. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I had remembered that you, Sylvia, had mentioned that the other Chris wasn't referenced in the Tuesday, May. So has that been added to a version that you all have? I don't see it here.
I did email Mitch about it this week as well. Is it going to be added to the execution copy? Day sixteen.
So we're talking about Chris Part, right?
Okay. That's right, he's still not here.
Yeah.
That's what you have in yours?
Yeah.
In this thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is in here. Okay, great, great. Any other amendments? Do we want to do them one at a time? One at a time, or? Thank you.
I, I. I think the only problem with that would be if someone missed a meeting, like, I don't know if there, if we had a hundred percent attendance, someone may need to abstain if they weren't in attendance for a particular meeting. That makes sense? All right, well, I was at all three, all. Move that we adopt these minutes.
That's missing from the. Yes, you can all do, you'll move it, great.
Yes.
We have a second from, like, you three, because you were all three of them. Okay, great.
Attention, the library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today, and we look forward to seeing you again.
If it's like my Italian translation things, I have to change what it's listening for before it can make sense. Okay, so that was moved by Sylvia, seconded by Cara. All those in favor?
I'm.
Okay. Minutes approved.
You'll have, you have to, you in the next day or two.
Okay.
Finish them, and they'll be approved. And you'll have plenty of time, you'll have some time.
Okay, that's great. Thank you, and they are great minutes.
Very good.
I guess, is our goal to have minutes of previous meetings approved as the following? Okay.
I would say three more meetings if you should be there.
Okay. Um, okay, Library District Director updates, Mr. Farnin.
So try to, if we have, obviously, like, we're not there yet, we are approaching maximum goals in the air with. Shouldn't have seen no one out there. We still have some ways to go, I know. There's still a lot of things that need to, and that's just prior to the. Yeah, prior to the IGA. So the building that we're working on Friday, as we expected, the Subcommittee on Buildings or Facilities or whatever it is, is reviewing the report. We're looking at questions, pretty straightforward, as one of my staff members said, it's like a glorified home inspection. It's like a hundred and sixty-three pages of light home inspection with how many hundreds of photographs, I have no idea, but pretty revealing and a pretty good executive story. So we'll, you know, the Subcommittee decide when you, when you come back, that's mainly to inform, you know, your discussions around the IGA, it was non-intrusive, they didn't open up stuff, they didn't err in anything to see where the problem lie, they just speculated on a lot of the things, and they did put together cost estimates, which are, I don't know, I'm assuming, we'll know more when we meet with the city and how justifiable they are.
Well, their estimate of costs for, this is just for the capital maintenance, is nine to eleven million. So that's a bigger number than we've seen before. It's not as big as I feared it would be. And then for me, the one thing that jumped out is that a chunk of that is preventative maintenance, which is something I think we'll want to continue doing. So I suggested to David, we might want to look at a wine idol for preventative maintenance in addition to ongoing capital with these old buildings. But, you know, we'll get into it and hopefully talk with him and be able to come back with to you guys with some recommendations and some thoughts. To me, I thought it was a very good report.
No, like, surprise big problems you didn't already know about?
Actually, the surprise was that some things were better taken care of than what I thought. Honestly, that was, that was a surprise.
Yes.
So Carnegie obviously is in bad shape, but we knew that.
Yeah.
Not even in shape, like, I shouldn't say bad shape, it's not in good shape.
It's in good shape.
And the services, but this building in Reynolds, not so bad, right? They maintained well, in systems, so HVAC systems and things like that are in good condition. So that's encouraging. There's a lot of things that you imagine are, you know, it's, it's cracking, order bricks and roofs that leak and stuff like that. That, it's a lot of physical maintenance of shelves, right? That has not been kept. We all kind of knew that, but it's, but I, you know, I was, another dollar amount's scary, but I, I honestly was going in this thinking they're gonna come back and it's gonna say forty million, because I was thinking eight. And I was like, they're gonna come back and say it's forty million, it's gonna scare the board to death and me too, but it wasn't. It's like, you know, it's nine to eleven, I was thinking eight. And I, and I think that's, that's not very far off. It's more than what the city has estimated in the past, but some of that is ongoing maintenance, that is something that the city at this base, that they will be taking care of. So it's not like we've just neglected them entirely for twenty years. Carnegie, I don't know if that's one that we're not, we're not moving. So the reason why we have to take care of cities, there's a price tag.
So the, one of the pieces I would mention in that, that this does not go into, is it mentions that Carnegie and the North Branch, and if I remember right, GRB, lacks basic things like insulation. So if and when the board decides to do renovation or an improvement on those buildings, given the city code, that will trigger a requirement to bring the whole building up to code, and that will be expensive. So that's, that's a cost that we don't know. I don't know if that's something we want to try and look at when we do the big facilities assessment. You guys do that next year, try and get your arms around, you know, how much that would cost. That's where you start to get territory of, is it cheaper to tear it down, do something different? But that's not, that's just not on the scope of this, so.
No, and I don't think, I don't think any of those are imminent either. Like, it's not like, we're gonna have to consider tearing down building in the next three, four years, so. Well, in terms of that, we'll be private facilities, and we look at, like, where our services are located, best five in the future. You know, I was, I was surprisingly encouraged. So JP Morgan Banking, we're getting closer, we had a nice meeting with them today, sort of mostly around banking services types of things. Kim sent in a very detailed list of some of the things that we have to do in terms of, in terms of agreement, that is, that's in the queue, so right forwarded to JP Morgan, they forwarded to attorneys. They do have a backlog right now, they, they, they brought in in April, May, and June more banks, and they brought in more accounts than they brought in in the previous year. So they do have a little bit of a backlog, and they don't know if that's gonna affect any backlog or not, but hopefully we'll get some resolution to that in the next couple of weeks.
So Kim had suggested that we actually do a motion around that, so that we could move quickly with signatures when they come in. And I'm gonna try and read what I think you were saying. So the motion would be that the board approves signing the forms needed to open the bank account with JP Morgan Chase upon final resolution of, writing, of accounting, of accounting terms as determined by the director, the president, and the secretary treasurer in consultation with legal counsel.
Account terms.
Account terms, okay.
That's the name of that.
So if you guys approve that, then whenever the paper hits, Sylvia and I and David can sign them and ready to go. Yeah, sometimes it's. We can't sign them tonight anyway. This is just allowing us to sign them when that's done. So you want to, so move that?
I so moved.
Somebody want a second?
Uh, sure, for a second.
Okay, great, moved by Sylvia, seconded by Sam. All those in favor?
I.
Okay, great. Someday we'll have a bank account.
So what is it, I'm thinking, so what they did to us today. The city was subject to the same contract, and basically protested almost all the same things. And so what the city has is a separate agreement, it's kind of like an addendum, and so that may be what they come back with, in which case they usually prepare to write something and say, it's like, we're gonna follow Colorado statute X, Y, and Z, and the, and that's, that's kind of what I think it is. And they accepted that.
There was actually a provision in that, it said they will follow directions. Written form, if they read to accept it, and I thought, just draft.
Yeah, that's when the city has a separate form to accept it. So hopefully this benefits responses, so we've got a RFP to police guy, I sent it to six firms. We expect a response by August fourth. Once those come in, the Subcommittee on Personnel will review those with me. Hopefully, there's absolute clarity once we read the proposals and no further interviews when required. But if there are further interviews required, that must be RFP, so remember that again, or we'll mind that. Employee handbook, we are working on the draft. We expect an initial draft back on August eleventh, at which point, library staff, Jennifer and myself, most of the leadership team will begin that draft to see if there are changes that you can make, or if we need to modify the language, also, I think six or seven frontline staff have agreed to also read that initial draft to give feedback to us as well. But the goal still is to bring back to you a benefits package and a. But the goal still is to bring back to you a benefits package and a employee handbook, either just before Labor Day, just after Labor Day, in August, or at least September, you will have a draft in front of you to consider, at which point then it goes to the entirety of the staff, for them to provide feedback to you, over the course of three weeks. We will probably set up, similar to what we did before, open hours, and also one-on-one interviews where staff can come and provide feedback to a library staff member who is not me. So maybe we'll be able to provide feedback to somebody who they collected data and analyzed it, and then we would offer that feedback back to you. And report sometime towards the end of September or the first week of October, at that point, you will be making decisions as to whether to accept whatever changes you want to make, and then we're going to be locking in prices for both the benefits and the budget for that month, that one block.
David?
Yes. Johnny brought up possibly having a trustee staff meeting sometime in that September window when the benefits package is up there for review. And I wondered if you saw any value in something like that, or perhaps a meeting where Sam and I sat in to listen, like, listen to staff talking with the benefits broker, but not say anything, or, you know, is there's some value in engagement there with the entire board or portion of it?
They loved it the last time, I, I think they would take it as big, like, you want to come and listen to them, that would be, what you did in the last time was great, I thought, and they, it was very well received, it was great. So yeah, I think so, but if you want to, also to make it happen, if you want to pay them to coincide, probably again, like what we did before, right, so lunch on break, we are going to be scheduling with the benefits broker, so we will have selected a benefits broker, while we haven't landed on a complete final draft of the benefits plan, there will be education that will be going on, so we're going to be, it depends on the broker, right? So the brokers all are putting in their plan how they intend to educate staff, whether they're putting an online video and everybody's supposed to watch it, I don't know, but whether they're going to actually come out. I spoke to all of these firms, and so I think a lot of them, they're going to put staff on the ground,
Yeah.
get in the library, answering questions, and being able to do some communication around what these benefits package may mean, and if in any way they differ from what the city currently provides, so there will be a lot of opportunities for them to educate on benefits.
Okay.
But whether you want to come and hear from them, like, whatever, that would be one.
Yeah, I mean, I think, one of the things I shared with both Sam and Johnny was that if we just have like an open lunch room, we're like, talk to us about the package, we might be asked to get into details we can't discuss because we don't know the, like, the tiny minutia, or we wouldn't know how something works, so I'd want to structure it in a way where it seemed more like a listening session, and, and so that's why I sort of proposed like the benefits broker maybe being there too, so that we could listen on to what kinds of questions or objections there were, or something like that.
Let's talk about that, you know, the gang of us are all librarians, and I'm highly sensitive to the fact that there are very different learning styles and ways of recording and competence levels in meetings, and the first meeting we had, just for air information, there was one staff member, out of all the people that spoke, who has been here for fewer years than I, everyone else who spoke to you during that meeting had people who have been here in excess of 10 years. I didn't expect that to happen, but that's what happened, so is there some kind of, like, order of who speaks in meetings? I don't know, like, I'm not privy to what that order would be, but it was, it was not lost on me, just that everyone who spoke was a senior person, so, that, you know, you're going to get whatever you're going to get, it was striking that nobody with fewer than four years spoke, and there are plenty of them in that room. I once spoke. What did they take away? I don't remember.
Yeah, right.
And I don't know that they would feel comfortable speaking in front of their peers who have much more seniority than them in the meeting, so I don't know what you, what you, what you take away from it should be, you know, taken with the greatest hope, I think.
Sure, okay.
But I think it's been good.
So part of the question Jen raised this afternoon was, would that be something that the full board should plan to do, or would the staffing Subcommittee be more appropriate? And I didn't really hear an answer to that piece.
I think it would be fine either way you guys decide to do it, I have been asked more than once with people in the staffing Subcommittee, so I've shared your names, and staff have been asked. I think they know that you're working with, so yeah, they said, who's on the staffing Subcommittee? Maybe that could be.
We said that at that meeting, didn't we?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
No, I know, I just think there was questions about reaffirming that the names were, in case they didn't take notes during that meeting, and they had not asked about any other Subcommittee that I'm aware of. And that was, that was new to me, I was like, huh, I was, I have open office hours.
Finance Committee.
Yeah, right. So, so can we just rely on you guys to give us news about how you, and how you want to do that?
Yeah, I just felt, you know, in the interest of transparency and engagement, to, to listen, which makes some sense to me, whether it's
Yeah.
Jen and I with you, or with the full board, to make non-stick about them.
Just over the Red Sox.
Yeah, sorry. Red Sox game.
Okay, so, well, two last things, the Budget and Finance Committee, the budget thing is coming along while we're working with the financial consultants. We have a kind of overall draft of budget things, I think we're going to be in good enough shape with the IGA and initiatives to begin, we're actually moving numbers around, the big thing that we still don't know is the healthcare cost, and that's a big number, so we need to kind of up that into the budgets, kind of very useful, but we're talking that this way about everything from the financial system that we'll be using, to a whole bunch of things, which is part of the request for that proposal, so it's all going well, I wish that was in your model in this head, and we can share it and say everything's going to be fine. It looks like everything's going to be fine, but we don't have an opening account, and we don't even know how much money is in the bank account.
I'm excited for that model.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, I'm ready for it.
It's going to be fun, it'll be a 15-year model, you'll be able to change the variables and see what things like, and last of all, I mean, it's a little premature, but we had, just as a matter of due diligence, we were looking at other HR I'm sorry, yeah, HCM payroll systems, so HRAS, whatever you want to call it, Human Resources Management, Human Capital Management, or whatever you're going to call it, like, so we have been with Workday, it was my assumption, and I probably said in one of these meetings before, that it is a 95 to 99 percent chance we're going to stay with Workday. We had set up other vendors to look at, just because that was the right thing to do and get pricing, so that we had an idea what to do, it sounds as if, and in a little likelihood, Workday, we will not be working with Workday, and so unanticipated. We are seriously interviewing a number of different HCM systems. It's more than just me, because a lot of people are involved in this, this is the place where people track time, track training, track education, where we do almost everything, and we've been a Workday shop for a few years now, and while it's not perfect, you know, it works, and they're just not, they don't have any companies that are smaller than 300 employees, I, I don't know if they can name one that's under 1,000, I asked them the question in the initial interview, how many how many employers do you have, a few of the during candidates, and they just looked at each other and was like, they kept referring to us as we were a special circumstance, and I, and then we closed the interview, I said, I think you're trying to tell us that you really don't want our business, and they did not say no, and so I haven't emailed into them asking them either to decline to bid, which would be awesome, or to bid, which is going to be stupidly expensive, now that we're seriously considering other models and watching demos, did a finance demo today, we did have two more demos lined up to part of it on Thursday, we will likely be coming back to you in short order with a cost, a vendor number, a select to move to the system, it's a it's not, it's big in terms of training, the transition to Workday was 20 months, you know, you have to respect it, like, we're, we're asking them what their own patient time is, and they're scoring higher for the shorter meta implementation time, I think, I feel confident that they can do implementation in three months, maybe four, and then there's a lot of beats that have to fall into place with the IGA, second of all, approval of the budget, third of all, lawful jobs.
Can Bob, would that be my question?
Bob's not a, we haven't hired Bob for the, he, Bob was only, his company will decide to bid, right now, Bob is only hired to advise you and off, be there to, for you to ask questions for the IGA alone, that's it. We're not even asking Bob to do the RFP for the migration, so, because he's, he has expressed an interest, and he mentioned again, hi, that his company's interested, and I kind of, we're not going to have him.
But can he be helpful on the data, on the recommendation on the data component that is HR? When we hear about that from IT in terms of what you're trying to figure out?
So you know, I think he possibly could be, I'll definitely talk to him about it. You know, the three firms that were interviewed, they all came highly recommended, we have a fourth that'll line up in case we go with any of those three, I mean, if Workday offers not to submit it, and I guess it's five, there's a sixth which was recommended, which primarily they're, they're, where they score high points is with international employers, and so we're not, we have chosen not to enter any of those. The other four, walking recommendation, they're from two libraries. Best CEO of the year, that's, that's kind of how we're running through this listing. They have all been like, it is surprising, like, it's great, it's refreshing, like, you call them, and we have a callback in the same hour, a welcome letter for thanking for considering me from the CEO of the company, in one case, like, we're getting great response from these groups, and they're all companies that their sweet spot is really, a number of employees is one to 6,000, so they are, they deal primarily with businesses that have 100 to 600 employees, and so that's where we're, that's where we're geared, which, really, Workday's Workday's an amazing, really, robust product, but it's suitable for a company of 50,000 people, and they couldn't think of one less than 300, I think, we can't think of one hundred thousand.
So David, can I go back to the financial model? Right now, we have that as a portion of our agenda for next week, are we ready to do that?
That's something that Jennifer and I have to look at, there, there is a model that's done, it's missing some pieces. We're just trying to speculate, how do we actually fit these things in, so that we can show anything, because we don't have an opening statement of accounts, that's what we don't have, which, it sounds silly, but, like, we don't know how much money is in the account, we have no idea how much we have to city back, so we can plug in a number and say, like, this is all again, and this is what we're going to earn, and this is what we're going to have to city back, and then show the model from there, but it would be.
Well, when we talked about this, I think we were talking about it not so much as looking at the budget, but looking at, the note I had was how budget reporting would break out for the trustees and for the public.
That's right, I think we can bring that up. There's some, there's some graphs, right, like, there's graphs of how the information would be displayed in tables and that, like in a dashboard.
This could be I don't want to say stupid question, but a question that has an answer that everyone else knows. But what, can the county treasurer not tell you how much money we have? So when you're talking about this opening statement of account, is that what you mean, like, how much money is the treasurer collecting?
Well, it's, it's, it's assets and liabilities, so we're trying to figure out, I mean, so the cash is one, cash is in the account. But we don't have any concept of, and I don't know and it's like, liabilities are we assuming?
Okay, okay.
The big liability, the second big liability right now is like, I don't have any idea how much we have, I don't know that we have getting kind of a round number, you could say, like, plug that in, we can plug that in, and we can run, you know, we can say like, plug in 10 million dollars, plug that in, we can look out for places, and that's it.
You need to plug in more than 10,000.
Or 12, it's a good way, but it, just say a number, whatever the number is, you can say, plug it in, and you'll go from there, it's just like that, okay.
We can.
Those sort of missing bits of data make the whole model. Because right now, we're listing as assets, like it's not, that's not, if there are buildings, it totally changes the asset.
When you said statement of accounts, I just thought like, oh, can't we find out how much our bank account, our bank accounts, yeah, yeah, can't the treasurer just tell us?
Report probably second, I guess, either still be there.
Oh, okay, great. Okay.
I had a public, I was like, we just have no idea.
We have some bit of statement from the approximately what
It can, well, counting this, you
So the So the August 2nd-ish one is, at that point, all collections for this year, or, yeah, but that's the bulk of them.
And that's the end of my report, I'm going to have three questions.
Subcommittees, staffing, sent out something this afternoon?
Yeah, we sent out something, I'm, you know, we had this discussion at the June 11th meeting about the living wage language in the IGA, so small but significant point, and since it seemed like at that time we were confused about what that phrase means, you had asked Johnny if we would pick it around, so we did, and I don't know if you all had a chance to see the email he sent, yeah. So our recommendation was to remove it, and we give a couple of suggested reworkings of that, when you would do a section, or we can leave it in, and if that's the will of the board, I would personally just ask for clarity of what we mean when we say that. So Jen, anything to add?
Nope. Thank you for summarizing all of your
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion?
I mean, I liked the proposed language.
The second one. Strive to offer salaries, pay grades, and benefits to the only comfortable.
Yeah, and to, to account that I got solid.
To, yeah, I did too.
Which is trying to acknowledge that that was important to LDEC, it's obviously important to us, so adding that in would hopefully speak to that, developing some use, the big term living wage.
I don't know if you were probably not hearing that, yeah, so.
Well, yeah, I don't know who gets trustees at, other than you get that, right?
I do.
Yeah, okay, you get that, do you, do you get the trustees at?
No.
Oh, okay, so, sorry.
Second bullet. That sounds like where people are sitting, so I don't think we need a motion on that, just direction to the attorney to revise the IGA to incorporate that language.
Thanks for doing that, Sam.
Yeah, sure. Other than that, I think the staffing Subcommittee has just been talking to David about several of the things he just outlined related to staffing, so that's our report.
Okay, good. Other Subcommittee?
Nothing from Budget and Finance, we haven't met, for a couple of weeks, we're waiting for the, we're waiting to see the model, so.
Okay.
Nothing on our part.
I have one thing from Facilities, additional, there was a hotline note that went around today, a council hotline. Historic Boulder has put in an application to make the civic area an historic district. And I asked David and Chris Messchuk if we could, we, so the Subcommittee could get a briefing from an appropriate planning staff member about what that means, since it has implications for the main library. I'd also like to ask if Peter Pollak could join us for that, and maybe Peter could advise us, for those of you who don't know Peter, he worked for the city in the planning department for a very long time, and ended his career with the city as the planning director, and he was an LDEC member, and had some good insights to offer around the main library's role in the civic area, I think he could help us make sense of this, it may be a nothing burger, I mean, we know the North Branch is already at the north side of this building is, is, has historic significance, and could be made a historic building, although the only thing that's remaining is really the east facade, because the interior has changed so much, and there are so many restrictions around what you can do with this building, and to that, to some extent, the other one because of the flood plain, but it would be useful to know that. And so anyway, if you guys are okay with that, I'll reach out to Peter if he's around and ask him if he could come in and help us figure that out. It looks like it's a fairly fast track, the application is already in, and it looks like staff negotiated some sort of an extension, which has them making the decision, basically, and going to boards in the Novemberish timeframe, so kind of need to figure out, you know, what's going on here, frontal, coastal. Yeah, yeah, so.
Is that ultimately the council that would vote to approve that?
Ultimately, it would be the council that would vote to. Ultimately, it would be the council that would vote to approve it. I think with historic stuff, it's, a lot of it is pretty restrictive. They're doing a cultural landscape survey. That was one of the things staff wanted to do because by making this a whole district, you know, they're bringing in a whole bunch of things and a lot of it is not, is not historic. This is mostly being triggered by the pan shelf.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So, but you know, that's the long history there. So anyhow, so we'll, we'll follow up with it and learn.
But we need here.
Interesting. Yeah, interesting.
Those can, they can be very frightening and they can be creepy. Typically they'll put a easement on the facade that they lose.
Yeah.
So you can do certain things, which can be a problem.
Yep.
But a lot of times they also have money. Which you can do, to decide you do something.
Right. Right.
Okay, any trustee matters?
I wanted to ask about the CalCon events later. So if we're interested in going, do we just let?
Just like those.
Okay. And so will you register us? Okay.
Sorry, three of you are already registered.
Okay.
I'd like to go, but I'm not sure if I'm going to be in town. So.
You could tell us by asking. So if you have an August one, the likely early bird, so if you can list them before that, we can discount price, but otherwise, like, but you can also like.
Because I'm only mostly interested, I think, in the Friday, the day that had the trustee. And that might be the only day I could go. Is that doable?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So put me down for that.
And Jen, could you ask Silly to let us know what our registration number is or something like that? Because there's some way you can actually set up your schedule in the CalCon thing if you sign in. She'll know. Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thank you. Jim?
Do you have a copy of my status report? There's the only thing I had any questions about was the IGA. So the catch to the staff department, we need to, you know, attorney, current John's meeting with the city. There's something over there. Do you want to proceed? You want me to make some changes to the draft? It's separate from the.
Yeah, it was sent out separately.
Oh.
Okay.
Separate from the meeting pack. Yeah, sorry.
Friday, Friday.
From Michelle. Oh, yeah. Okay, sorry. I didn't know. I apologize. At the very end is.
I'm just looking through it quickly. I don't remember anything that indicated a clear direction that would require changing things at this point.
That was my question.
Yeah.
It makes the gene we just discussed.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything of these that would require us to do anything right now. I, I think it's preliminary to do anything like drafting alternative language for ownership versus leasing. I don't know if you agree, Benita, they were pretty strong that they're going to recommend ownership. And similarly with the access, you know, I think hold off on those. If we have to go there, we can. Now, we had the assumption that with two IGAs, if the county IGA trails because the city and the county are fussing about how to do appointments, we can still go ahead with this, the other IGA, the transition. So that's. So, yeah, no, it was a very positive meeting and, you know, I think we're on the same wavelength, you know. So, yeah. Yeah. They definitely want more money than we hoped they wanted. That's not a surprise. Probably another 3 million or so. But they're willing to provide documentation for it. So that's fair. And they also said, yeah, they're paying for all of noble construction costs. That was clear. So, you know, they were drawing some bright lines and their rationale was just the community changed the basis for which it's paying for the library on January 1st. And therefore, to avoid double taxation, the town, the city should be repaid for all operating costs associated with the library from January 1st. That's a reasonable, simple rationale. So we'll see. They're going to get documentation.
That was it for me.
Yeah, okay.
Anything with the county? I think, Benita, you were going to talk to one, the council attorney, county commissioner.
She, she agreed to talk to all of us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Brave woman.
But yes, still pending.
Um, I've talked with Ashley. She called me back and talked with her.
And what?
And not the other two. So I don't know if this should be, I don't know if it's, I mean, I guess it's not public here. Well, I think it's just like, just some background. It probably would be appropriate there. Nothing that would change our course. Just.
Anything else? Are we done in three times? That's great. It's proud. Well, let's.
We're going to leave this day.
I'd say that you guys have a tremendous amount of work.